We will call the Grant County Board of Commissioners to order Monday, June 15. And we are still working under the orders of the Governor in that we're still in an emergency health situation and he hasn't allowed that public meetings may be held via the Internet. We have one of our commissioners who is joining us that way. And during this state of emergency, his vote is legal on the Internet noting all commissioners are present. We will call the meeting to order and ask you to stand. I'll lead us in a word of prayer and ask that I repeat this in the pledge of allegiance. Oh God, our heavenly Father, as we take these moments, we not only have the hope of spring and the hope of new opportunities in the summer, we also have the hope of your love, your compassion and your mercy. And we pray, Father, this day that you will grant us wisdom as we do the business of the people, that you will continue to help our, not only our community, our state, our nation and world, but help us to get over this coronavirus pandemic and to be moving forward in all the things that we have to do as we live and as we love and as we labor in our lifetime. Thank you for your help this day. I pray in Jesus' name.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have affirmed that Mike, Mike, you can hear us and you can speak to us. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you. We have claims and payroll items. On June 8th, there was the preapproval for general fund and other batch invoice edit reports. The general batch was $209,044 and excuse me, 93 cents and the other batch $5,621.6 and a single preapproval, start part in the amount of $138. Those are our preapprovals and we need to ratify those preapprovals.
I'd move to ratify the preapprovals.
I'll second.
Mr. Mallory made the motion. Mr. Burton supported it. I don't think we have any discussion on that. To all those in favor, the June 8th and the single approval would say aye. It is carried three to nothing. We also have the June 15th claims and amounts invoice edit reports. General batch would include $195,148.24, excuse me, $25. Other batch is $64,393.78. And highway is $36,178.73. And a special batch entitled election, and that is for the primary in the amount of $29,138.10 for a grand total of $324,858.86. We need to ratify that. I mean, we need to approve that.
If I make a motion to approve?
Mr. Burton has made the motion to approve the June 15th batches, which include general, other, highway and election. Mr. Mallory has seconded it. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor would say aye. Aye. It is carried three to nothing. Last but not least, on our claims and amounts, we have payroll number 12. This was issued on the 12th, this last Friday. Permission was given on the 9th in the amount of $518,408.13. And since we already paid that out, everybody's check balanced real nice with that, we probably ought to ratify that.
I would move to ratify it.
Second.
We have a motion to ratify the preapproval on payroll number 12. And we have support. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried three to nothing. We have cared for our current claims and payroll. All right. Receipt of monthly wakes and measures report is next on the agenda. And Mr. Fleming's report in front of us from April 16 through May 15. Any questions or comments, gentlemen? Hearing none, we should receive that report. May I do that with your common consent? Right.
Yes, I consent.
All right. Receipt of monthly reports, we've got that communication and board updates. That's any additional with elected officials, boards or special committees? Seeing none at that, this point, oh, Mr. Jackson is here. We will take a report from our EMA director.
Morning, Dylan.
Sir.
Morning, Mike.
Good morning. Good morning.
Just wanted to give an update from the EMA office. We did have one of our field support officers pass away on Friday. It's going to be just Wednesday. Couple of other things, we are day 96 of operational period with EMA. Still moving forward with that. However, we are transitioning into more of a recovery mode. Planning for if you have a surge. We're still building some personal protective equipment. We are expecting shipment this week from the state out of the national reserves. Hopefully that will help us get through.
I'm smiling. I'm just going to ask, is that the shipment we expected a couple of weeks ago?
Yes, that is the mark. Had a little miscommunication with that, but it is coming. So we'll see what we report in a couple of weeks. The other thing is, we did submit a grant that you gentlemen did approve the last time we was here. We did sit down on Friday. That was for a $4,000 grant. We're currently working also on the PA, the Public Assistance Grant, the reverse and care of that part, which you all are very involved in right now. That's pretty much where we are in the EMA.
I think I was going to talk a little bit more about back on track stage five later on, but did you mention as of today, our positive cases in the county, 324?
Correct, 324 and 24 deaths. We'll stand there. We track every 14 day period. So in the last 14 days, we've been averaging about four new cases a day. So we've been pretty steady over the last month, really. Few spikes here and there, but for the most part, the average has been about four to five cases.
And we continue to see testing from often down at the Y or how much longer?
Day to day at this point. There are some issues at the Y with air conditioning as far as making those people comfortable in there. So we have come up with an alternative site, the Lee and Faulkner Community Center, where they will be providing, that is not finalized yet. But that facility, I think there it serves a couple purposes, states, local, where we really need it in that community. And provide also a good environment for those folks.
So we don't have a transition date on that?
Yeah, we do not. And additional to that, we are also planning mobile test sites and remaining with some interns in conjunction with the health department. They are planning some mobile test sites. June 24th, we have city fire station number two will be the first one opened to the public. Free charge, that's the testing COVID virus. However, at that location, they will also get the people in life. They will give them basically Dr. said, Dr. Lord, an animal test, see if they've ever had it recovered. Lot, lot still going on and that probably will be planned.
Our challenge is, even though we're moving on this back on track Indiana program, the virus is still going to be out there and we need to be aware of it, of we are continuing to move the economy and move our businesses back to where they need to be. But the more we test, the more we can isolate, find out who's sick and take care of them before we get spread. So that testing program over the summer, I think is going to be very beneficial.
It really comes down to how well we manage the virus that's out there. Testing certainly gives us, but it's really our only road back. It's the only way we know where it is and how it's going.
At the risk of being repetitious, how are you progressing on the move?
It is coming. We have a meeting planned this afternoon, some radio stuff. So I'll find out more about how the building is. I think we were waiting on some part of it really for the EMA side to get a seat functional. But really, I'll find out more today. Plan was hopefully by the end of the month.
Michael's not with us today, but I think you mentioned at your meeting, there's been the transition, the hospitals now folded their dispatch into central dispatch. So we are totally combined. I mean, unified.
We don't are true.
No. Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
Right. Any other board, special committees need to report at this point? Marcus isn't in the room, but Kevin, anything from IT? All right. Thank you. And David White is in the room. Highway Department's next.
I wanted to bring up a few things. The highway's been working on. We did start our chips and all program approximately two weeks ago. We do have Liberty and Green County. Started the Frank runs today and hopefully we've done a Frank run. Hopefully maybe toward the end of next week. The one bid that we had from Hoover Pride Estimating on the concrete overlays, Bridge 82 and Bridge 606, the amount was $374,521. I'd like to recommend them for the, those two projects. They're only bid, but I'd like to recommend them anyway. Cost estimate from United on doing the project, what they estimated was $386,000. About $12,000 was the estimate.
That's good. We already had initially sent something in about this to the state. Do we need to ratify that, that action?
So all you have to do is, we've already got the money for it. We break up our half. When we get done, we can voice it again and make sure that matching all the numbers.
So by action, we've already taken root plate.
Right.
Long as you accept the bid. So we do need to accept the bid.
Yeah.
And that was $374,521. Bridge 82 and 106.
Six.
606.
One bridge is on our way, we have a lot of that. That's six street.
We need to move forward with that. We have a motion from Mr. Mallory to approve the $374,521 bid for Hoover Pride for bid Bridge 82 and 606. Is there support for that, Mr. Burton?
Yes, I second that.
Right. We do have support. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. White? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried three to nothing.
The next thing I'd like to bring up is I requested from four different vendors, Salt quotes for 321. I did ask that it be into me by Friday at 4:00. I did work on Friday, so, but I did receive two. So I'd like to recommend you go with a little bit on this and I'll go ahead and say both. If for some reason I get something today, it's more like multiple service or UPS or whatever, sometimes I do deliver that way. Most of them just be quote. The two quotes I received was Port Salt for $81.74 per ton. The other company was Compost General and their price was $94.28. Last year, we paid $91.45, but did go down quite a bit if we don't want salt on the technology.
That we used last year?
No, we used a company called Detroit Salt.
That's your recommendation we go with?
Yeah. Unless for some reason I get one today, like I said, sometimes they overnight, but most times I get them there.
Trying to just think of a nice little caveat that we can say that in the event that we do receive a lower bid today, we would authorize Mr. White to accept that lower bid because that's what we're after is a lower bid. The items presented, Port Salt would be the company that we're going.
Yes.
Is that okay, just to consent to that, Mike?
Yes, I consent. Yes.
We'll consent to that and then you can report back and make sure that we got the lowest bid. Right? Right. We're just consenting. Okay. We're consenting adults today.
And that's all I have. I had a couple of things, Dave. I was checking on the EMS building. Looks 100% better. For your information, Mike, they corrected that soffit and I also noticed, Dave, that you've got a new truck back or a different truck. Is that the one you just purchased? And then lastly, I just wanted to commend you for, you were the one that does the bowling on that ground, right?
Yeah.
It looks great. It looks 100% better, the building. Of course, the grounds look great too.
I've got a couple of things that besides that one, there are other properties. It looks like either those involved in land ownership have built in, maybe a part of county ditch to get some extra land in our right of way and maybe a need for us to add a county dip it out and get water flow. So I'll wait on your correction on that. And we did get the first house project, the whole area plan, that worked pretty good. I don't know if we have the equipment to take a two floor house down, the single story, what we did, it was fine. Built it back in there.
I thought it was interesting, the only complaint Larry had last day was that you guys had the thing down before the dump, which is good. And then lastly, I was going, did you get a chance to check on the bridge?
No, I've got that on my list. I know where you're coming from.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Old business in Harris, Vote Center financial request.
Good morning, Commissioner Burton.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioner Burton.
Good morning.
I originally came to you with this request at your April meeting and I guess you responded favorably, but you decided to go ahead and make a decision at that time. So I'm coming back with you while this is all still fresh on our minds as we just came through the primary election. Because of probably COVID, quite a bit of it, we had an interesting time trying to secure poll workers and there were some of our locations that were shy. We didn't have a full staff of poll workers. And right now, we, with precinct voting, we have 160 poll workers. And then also then there's another 40 possibly other people that we need for other responsibilities during the election time. I thought this would be a good time to come back to you with the Vote Center idea. What our request for the commissioners is help with the poll books. Right now, currently, as you know, when you go into the poll location, the clerks look through the paper books to find your name. It'd be poll books just to refresh your memory. You use your ID, the barcode on your ID and your driver's license. It'd be scanned and immediately your information would come up. And then also immediately, you would go from the 32 poll locations to 11 poll locations, 12 including the four houses. These electronic poll books would all be connected to each other on a secure line. So when you go into one location to vote, scanning your ID, immediately all the other locations are notified. So you can't go across town and vote again. This, these electronic poll books have come to us with a cost of $61,600. And that includes the 24 poll books at $1,500 each of the 36. The statewide voter registration system, that total will be the 600, the software, 15,000 and the installation and training 10, bringing us to the $61,600. And so our request today, and again, this is going through the election advisory committee that got formed by the two party chairs. So that's our request today, bringing it back to you for the commissioners to help us with that $61,600.
What amount are you talking, Pam?
I'm talking about the $61,600.
So are you asking us to pay what portion of that?
That I'm asking if you could pay the full amount of that and if not, then if there was, that's what we're asking. It's that full amount.
Couple of things, as I remember, and my memory only makes me dangerous, it doesn't make me accurate. As I recall, sitting on that committee with Pam, we would not be required to make this statement until 2021.
That's correct.
So we have, we can get the system knowing that we have to pay for it in 2021. So we do have some time to work that out budget wise. Now, here I go being dangerous again. And if I recall correctly, in a presentation either to us earlier or the council, we were going to see approximately an overall savings of $20,000.
So it's like the amount that you just approved to pay, that was for 160 poll workers for their meals and so we could take that down to 55 to maybe 60, 65 poll workers. There might be some locations that might be large enough that might need a couple extra judges or something to help. I guess it would be taking that number down considerably and also the couriers.
Right. So we have this money already budgeted for the fall campaign, the fall election process. So some of that, we're going to see savings. We won't use up all that money. So some of that could be folded into this cost that would reduce it on our line item budget for everything. So that's, that's another positive and it gets us even better count results. And I was pretty impressed with your count result time this time as well.
I heard that on a specific course reading. I heard compliments when you shared that because I agree with Mark. Much smoother than some time's past. Repeat.
This is a thought I couldn't work on that. My thought would be on from 2021 budget perspective, it could be a case of Pam's budget in the election area, the general fund, but actually you reduce that by poll costs most likely. That part where you pay for the equipment, wherever that becomes, the account, that's where that would go up. I would just say that 2020, right on its own at this point, there could be some unused budget there, which is great, but then you budgeted 2021's budget where we need to have that appropriate. And I mean, councils, you know, approve the concept of the advertising, the training that has to go on for the public. So would we take this out of our budget or we just put that into a new line item for Pam's budget in 2021? Well, my thought would be just using existing equipment account. If there really, assuming there is one in the general fund budget, I'd have looked at those accounts to see. My thought is just going to incorporate to an account that already exists for equipment. If there is one, and actually it could go in, I mean, we're talking budget for 2021. And it could go into the commissioner's side of the budget or it could go into first election pieces, equipment too. But it doesn't matter which one it goes in because it's all general fund dollars. So it really doesn't matter which department it goes in. Yours is going to be reduced from a cost standpoint for personnel, for poll workers. So your overall budget would come down unless you put a separate piece in yours and it'd need to go there or go to the commissioner's. It really doesn't matter what, it's still general fund. So really today, we just need authorization from commissioners to join in a contract with, who is our company?
Microvote.
With Microvote, we're $61,600 contract. Yeah, you're just committing to making sure you pay for it someplace, wherever you put it in the budget. Do we have that contract now?
We do not.
Okay. So what I would say is that in consultation with the auditor, we would be prepared to have a, take that next step of agreeing to a contract. We just have to bring it back, look at the details, go through Kyle and then we can adopt that next go around.
Wonderful. Thank you. And I will give that to Justin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's momentum without spending money. Yeah. You're obligating to it whenever you do a contract. I think the council, of course, they adopt the budgets and they're aware of that request. So I'm assuming they will still follow through on that. I believe that they are heartily agreement with that as well. Under new business, we have a request from Vince, I'd like to keep reference the Under new business, we have a request from Vince, I'd like to keep reference the proposed elevator repair. And since he is, is sick day to day, Justin, do you have that information to share?
Sure. So what he told me was this is for rush repair for the service elevator over. To $6,787. If approved, we have to put a down payment down payment. That he said for.
So they want half upfront in order to schedule?
That's correct.
Get the work done.
And he also mentioned that this is only a thousand dollar. They were more than, so. Down to $4,000.
So we're saving money and he wants us to do it quick.
That's just a, that's a just a.
All right. And again, I asked this question earlier, but we'll just come out of general maintenance or do we have? Jail maintenance?
He'll come out with the general.
So we have a service elevator that needs work, gentlemen? Could I get a motion to spend some money on the jail pit elevator? Mr. Maury has made a motion. Do you second that, Mike?
Yes, I second.
Thank you, sir. So we have a motion from Mr. Maury to approve the Eisenkrupp work agreement for the service elevator in the jail. Our down payment will be $3,877.50, total contract price, $67.87 even. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Or Mr. Burton as well, carried that unanimously? Thank you. Next on the new business item, we have Grand County Economic Development Commission appointments. I believe at the last council meeting, the county council did develop the, or set into motion, the county economic development commission. And we have a few things that we have to care for. Mr. Auditor, as I recall, we did not receive any appointments from the city of Maryland.
Yeah, I have not received any cabinet nomination from the city of Maryland. I, I did send that correspondence to the president of their city council, but not received anything back at all.
And our, our concern was that are we supposed to wait on them, or do we fill that vacancy, since we don't have a nomination?
Correspondence I had received from Kyle Persinger, I think in the absence of their nominating someone, Paul's the commissioner, he'll fill that slot. That's my understanding. I don't want to take the role of attorney, but based on what Kyle's correspondence showed, that's what it appears.
All right. That's, I just wanted someone to affirm that besides what I was thinking.
And I think Kyle is the one who confirmed that, the one who, right?
Yes. We did have a quick little talk with him prior to the meeting, to make sure that we were headed in the right direction. So at, at this point, the county commissioners make a selection. And that is for a three-year term. There is nomination by county council and approved by the commissioners with a two-year term. Nomination by Marion City Council, appointed by commissioners for a one-year term. Then at the end of those terms, and the new term starts, then those are initially a four-year selected term after that. We understand we have veto rights as the commissioners. And so after multiple discussions, we do have a selection for the county commissioners as well as the Marion council that we would nominate in, in vacuum of not having one from Marion City Council. Commissioners are recommending that Eric Walz be appointed to a three-year term. And that Tim Street be filling the slot of the Marion City Council appointment for a one-year term. Those are our two recommendations. And want to act on those separately, Ron and Mike, or do we want to do this kind of together?
In light of the discussions and, and the conversation with Kyle, I, I would just assume, make a motion to approve Eric Walz. And Tim Street as the, yeah, city council. And I second that.
All right. So Mr. Maury has moved to make Eric Walz the county commissioner selection for a three-year term, and Tim Street nominated by, for the council slot, Marion City Council slot for a one-year term. And there is support for that. We have any discussion on those nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that is carried, three to nothing. Well, we have had some discussion about the nomination from the county council. I did talk with Mr. Millsworth this morning. And so I'm not sure council had minutes that automatically said what their recommendation was. Trying to be kind here, I'm just going to basically say, with the recommendation that came to the council, initially, we discussed vetoing that and sending it back to the council for action this week. How do you want to, should we discuss that individual or that position any further? Or just veto their, their appointment and ask them to reevaluate?
It would be my opinion and, and motion that we would send it back to the council for another name. Understanding that there are some interest from other council. As of right now, I would veto the first nomination.
I don't know if you heard that, Mike, but Ron's making a motion to veto the recommendation of the council, send it back for their discussion on Wednesday.
Okay, hold on a second, Pat.
Right, we do have a motion with support, and I think we pretty much discussed that. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we will send that veto back to the council and ask them to reevaluate at their meeting this week.
Mark, I just had one comment, that's something that Kyle sent in his email to us. I know the county council last meeting talked about whether members serve in that role. According to Kyle's information, it says should not be a person who holds a rule to the law. So someone that's in office could not, according to this, and it says should not, doesn't say shall not. So I'm not sure, but we pulled their, just wanted to point that out.
He, he talked to us prior to this meeting, and he's doing more research at Phil on what's that root of, right? Terminology means, and whether or not he can.
Okay, very good. I know we talked about the Phil last meeting, he wasn't really sure either.
So we're, we're going to let them wrestle with that one more time, and then we send this up with backwills. Get this commission going. All right. We, next on the line item, have Dawn's cleaning solution proposal for cleaning for Salem Bank Building. Can you walk us through that since you were sure, Dawn?
Commissioner, you have before you the entire proposal for the cleaning of the central dispatch over the Salem Bank. Kyle is working right now to put a new agreement into the, sorry, draft a new agreement this in there. The only thing that we're proposing to you today is the west floor post construction. It's a bid service for $60,000. Everything else will be property.
So this deep cleaning quote is really, now that the center is in place, we have, we have drywall dust, we have all sorts of things that really just need one deep cleaning to get it to an operational standard. Even though we're working in there already. Right? So they're recommending a deep clean at $960, and that's specifically for the dispatch center. That's correct. And again, I'm assuming that we have that extra $960 in our janitorial budget. What do you think, gentlemen?
I can understand with all the construction, it probably needs a deep cleaning, and I would just, I think that's reasonable. So I'd move to approve that. I'll second.
We do have a motion to approve the deep cleaning bid of $960 for Dawn's cleaning solution. Mr. Burton gave support. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye, it is carried, thank you. Tenderly patiently waiting in the wings, Terry Purwood. I know that that's not Todd Nurdle over there, is he? How you doing? How's Terry this morning?
All right, Mark. Just two, first or things. We need to recognize the submissions that were given for the Phase Two RFP, which is recovery dispute. If you remember the additional towers, that kind of thing. And if we can't open them and read them aloud, obviously this is our process, the EDI code for 509 allows us to do. I know there's representatives from Motorola here, hey. Okay, is there anybody, there's nobody from J and K here? Those are the two submissions that you have, and basically just put in the meeting minutes that you, it was submitted by Motorola Solutions and J and K Communication.
And do we have a scoring team or what?
Yes, you do. You have a five-member scoring team that represents, it's what you utilize before with the councils themselves. Basically represents all your police, safety officials, the government, right, fire, police, DNA, whatever you want, right? So it, it represents basically the emergency services. And that's what it asks.
When do we anticipate a recommendation?
Sorry to cut you off, Mark. We will be doing the scoring between now and all the way through July, because there will be interviews, it's a big event to do. And we would anticipate coming back to the commissioners on August 3rd for recommendation. If we, if, if it takes longer for the interviews or best and final offer, we will be at the following meeting, the 17th. We won't go beyond the 17th.
We will initially, we will put down August 3rd as our report paid on this Phase Two.
That is correct. No matter what, we'll be for it.
Very good.
It's the best and final that takes a little bit of work. The, the last item there, I know you have a process you go through on the claims for the contractor to do all your remodeling. Bowman, their painter, actually sent hard copies to our office, so that we picked up. Everybody does soft copies, but they did it the old way, and what are those?
This is around the, this says 15,000 with 1936.
Yeah.
Is that what it adds up? There are two on here.
Yes, yeah, it's the application one and the application number two. And you're still withholding retained, okay? The painting's done, but they'll come back and do the touch up. Their local painter, Bowman, obviously is a little contractor, he's a local painter, he needs just a little bit of scrap. And that's the reason we're asking, go ahead and take some consideration, approve that claim, the others will go through the normal process. Does that make sense?
Yes, and we have actual paperwork going to get adjusted for just the stall in.
Okay, yeah, that's, I have not seen it until today, and there's packets. And it has the backing on it too, Justin, that's it, which has the actual applications of it. It's the normal, but this one we're doing kind of, yeah, just for live file, let me try to get a copy of the whole file.
We can either authorize this today, gentlemen, or as soon as we have the voucher, the warrant, we can pre-approve it. Whichever you prefer. You want to just go ahead and approve it now, or wait until we have the paperwork I can sign off on?
You don't anticipate any?
Hiccups? No, no, I don't, Ron. They've been very, very good. I will have to tell you when Todd called them and said, we need some touch up here, touch up here, they came and. So, or I would recommend that company for painting.
Why, just to check, I guess, from a process standpoint, every month we do a process check. So I thought would be is if we get this down here, we're going to, you know, just we can get a process, compare it next Monday, acknowledge you're pre-approved for next Monday's meeting. That, that's my thought, you know, keeps, we'll have other clients I'm sure to come in for preapproval for next Monday's check date. So my thought is this will just be one of the.
We get that paperwork, I'll do the preapproval, and we'll give it out Monday.
That as soon as Jess gets up, this together, she'll send you an email, hey, we got a set of claims for preapproval. We got greatly appreciated.
Right. Any other updates?
No, that's about it.
Phase Two? Any other budget meetings that we've got scheduled here in the next little bit or?
I know my recommendation is that the commissioners and council have a joint meeting for the final funding of Phase Two. Because you really do, we're doing the RFP, and there will be a recommendation in August. And so, and then between August and when we get an agreement signed, you need to go ahead and figure out your funding mechanism for Phase Two. So that's my recommendation to the commissioners.
How soon should that be?
Just in the next two to three weeks.
Right. We'll start the machine, see if we can schedule that. We've got a regular session on Wednesday night with the council.
Yep.
So if he can pull his people this week, we can try to afford a special session.
And decisions wouldn't be made then, they would just be able to talk through the process of how you want to find this, very good thing.
Alrighty. Thank you. All right. Couple of other items that we need to just mention before we go to the public comment. I hand it to Mr. Maury, I'm sorry I don't have this for you, Mike, but we'll just kind of talk, talk through it. July the 4th begins Stage Five of Back on Track with the Governor's directives. And so the main things, we are actually open for business here today at the county building. Most, most of our folks have been paying attention to the advertisements that, that they come in, they, they need to be checked for a fever, any tracing information we need, wearing masks when in common area of close and personal. But the Stage Five, when we get into July, everything is back to an open type of situation. The challenge for state, county, local government, it says resume regular public operations, use tools to screen employees daily, and then provisions for employees to maintain social distancing. Currently, we have masks for our employees as well as the sneeze guards that we try to get up in every workspace where we have direction with the, or interaction with the public. public. One thing that the governor has, has said each and every time is that local operations set their policies. And so we need to be thinking as we're moving into that new openness of stage five, how long are we going to require masking? How long will we continue to keep the, the sneeze guards up or if we ever take them down? We just need to be discussing that. And what, if any, new regulations or policies will we have for the public? I'm assuming that there will be a day and if it's not later, probably July 4th, we need to decide whether we're going to continue to take temperatures of those personnel coming in or not. So we just need to publicly have that discussion, gentlemen, and keep our, our thoughts in order. Any, any thoughts, Ron or Mike?
I think we have been, I think maybe even a step beyond, but I, I would just recommend.
Continue to follow the, the governor's guideline. I'm, I'm thinking that at some point in July that we relax, the, you know, the temperature skin from incoming citizens, they're not doing that anymore in most of the businesses. They're not doing it at Walmart, they're not doing it at Lowe's, they're not doing it in other locations. And the big thing is to make sure that our, our employees are fine and again, comes a point where I'm sure we're going to stop that temperature thing as well and we'll ask the health department for some direction on that, so. Any thoughts on that, Mike?
No, I, I don't have anything additional.
All right. Just so we have it on record that we are making those discussions, we're trying to get those policies and procedures together so that we're getting back to normal, but we want to get more back to normal than we are now. So just about everybody in the room has their mask on except me.
Jim.
And Justin. All right. We will continue to limit the number of attendees to 25 and encourage folks to join us on WebEx. I think that's one of the policies that in the future we will probably still run WebEx so that we have a greater accessibility to the community that can jump online anytime. But again, that's part of our discussion. Gentlemen, do you have other new business that we need to review?
I wanted to discuss, I'm still getting, I'm still getting notifications on the solid waste district meetings and with the schedule I have, particularly as it pertains to the treatment, I, I, it's my understanding that you said you would be willing to represent with Mark on the solid waste districts, or is that correct?
Sure, yes.
I, I'm, what I'm going to do, I'm going to contact Kyle, the interest Mark too, that makes me, I'm getting the communications and I think they're expecting me to be there and I won't be, so I just want to make that, I want to make sure you and I were on the same page and Mark relates that to the, to the board.
Yep, okay. I'll be glad to do that.
How you doing, Mike? I'm doing well. I'm, I'm ready to get back to work.
I bet you are.
Yeah.
Well, as of July the 4th, the emergency declaration from the governor should phase out. That means that from that point forward, WebEx meetings will not be legal for public, general public, open meetings. We will have to have those meetings intact in council chambers or wherever those, those meetings are scheduled. But again, like I said, we probably will keep the WebEx option open for those who may want to hear what's going on or see what's going on, but don't have time to get downtown. With that said, this is a public forum and if you would like to address the work of commissioners, we invite you to step up, your name, your address, present your concern for comments. I will declare us in recess and next meeting will be July the 6th at 10 a.m. in these chambers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So.